Our brand-new board member, Art Mahoney. So he's a contractor, a local contractor, so he's got lots of experience with building and zoning issues, so I think he'll do great on the board. But with that, I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, there are two items on our agenda that we have no action on. Number one, unless there's somebody here for Pani Industry. Is there anybody here for Pani Industry? All right, if there's nobody here, there's no new information. When we adjourned that one at the last meeting, we had said we would reopen it after we've had an opportunity to review, well, after they submitted information and the Building Department had an opportunity to review it. But at this point, we still need additional information, right?
Our town engineer sent feedback, and we're waiting on a response from them.
Okay. So seeing nobody here, we're just going to continue that adjournment. At some point, if it goes on too much longer, we're just going to tell them they're going to have to re-advertise because the neighbors need to have an appropriate amount of notice on that. And with that, we also have item number three, where when they came in for their original discussion, I think we gave them food for thought and some things to think about, and so they have not come back yet. So we'll give them another month or two and see if they're going to rethink their need for their interpretation. So with that said, our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, June 27th, and Tuesday, June 20th, sorry, July 25th. We do have one set of minutes to approve, the minutes from the meeting of April 25th. I know I made a couple suggested amendments to them, if there's comments.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended with the notation. They were super minor changes.
Yeah, very minor, very.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And by the way, I have like, brand-new computer because of things who I am, like, in my first computer I had, so it made changes to something, and then I was like, trying to figure out, wait, why did things change? So even the changes that I sent you were like, I had to undo my changes. It was crazy. All right. How this works is we have one public hearing this evening, so that's an application that this board has already had the opportunity to review, and now we want to hear if there's any concerns from neighbors that we should be aware of. But otherwise, the other applications before us are all appeals that are, were reviews that are, the first time this board is seeing them. So it's really the opportunity for this board to ask questions of you, to understand, because everything, you know, you're here because you're asking for something that's not allowed by code, and so it's our opportunity, our obligation, honestly, to understand what it is you're trying to do, whether it makes sense, whether there's a way to mitigate it, or, you know, lessen any impact on any neighbors. And so that's what we take you through this evening, and then at the appropriate time, we invite your neighbors in to give us any comments and feedback on your applications. So with that said, I have item number two is a public hearing, Appeal 4063 Jonathan Nash, 27 Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot rear line and a 946-square-foot size variance for a proposed 34-foot by 30-foot, or a total of 240-square-foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the Zoning Ordinance. The footprint of the existing house is 1,824 feet. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
I'm actually Jonathan Nash's father-in-law.
Yes, he sent us a note that he was going to be away, he's out of the country, and so you were going to be here. You're Tony Castagna?
Yes.
Good, okay, no problem. So when Mr. Nash was here last week, we talked about the use, what he's proposing is a new three-car garage that would, with boat storage and with a second floor. The house had a garage, his original house, his existing house has a garage, but it was converted to living space, so currently he's got no garage, so that's why there's a reason why he's asking for this. He did tell us there would be no plumbing in this building, but there would be electric.
Just electric.
Yeah, he wanted to be able to put garage door openers and things like that, so that's fine. He was supposed to get updated information on the survey. Jackie, that's what we have?
Yep.
So please understand, day of meeting, we get a packet here that gets us some additional information. Okay. Oh, that's right, because with this one, we were questioning how big the house was because we wanted to be sure we were covering all the required variances. So he's proposing to put the garage on the side, obviously adjacent to the driveway, as opposed to the configuration of his lot. He goes really far back on the one side, but it's not the side with the driveway.
Right.
So it's kind of, that doesn't help in terms of where he'd be able to put the garage, because otherwise he'd have to go around and around the well and everything else. Do you know where his septic is?
The septic is in the backyard behind the, where the proposed garage would be, but he had the building inspector come out, and they went over where it is.
Okay.
There wasn't an issue.
Okay, so again, probably closer even to the house a little bit, which would...
It's actually farther out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's five and a half feet off of the drive. Why is he not connecting it to the driveway?
There's like, just a little piece of grass there. It's, the driveway, it's literally probably within three feet of, three or four or five feet of the edge of the driveway, just grass there, and then the gravel, the base for the shed, because he has a shed there currently.
Okay.
Right up against the edge of the driveway. So once the shed moves, then, you know, they can, they can take out that base of gravel and the railroad tie that the shed's on now, and then put the foundation.
All right, the only other issue that came up was he's asking for a second floor to this, but he's not actually allowed a second floor, a full second floor. The height that he was proposing was too high.
Yeah, he brought it down to 29, I think it was 24 feet, nine inches.
Okay.
He said it had to be below 25 feet, I believe.
All right.
Yeah, that was, and like, we didn't discuss that when he was here last month, so that's why we just wanted to be sure. He was aware it could not be as high as...
It's been updated on the plan for the actual garage.
Okay, cool. All right, comments or questions from board members?
And we have record of the changes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good then.
I'm good.
All right, I do have three neighbor letters, so...
There should be four.
Maybe I didn't count right. One, two, I have, oh, four. My paper was sticking there. All right, so...
And those are the neighbors, just so you know. If you're looking at the house from the street, it's the neighbor on the left side, which is the closest to where the garage would be, the neighbor on the, on the right side of the house, and the neighbors that are on the front of the house, basically looking at their house.
Okay.
So it's all, all four, basically.
Okay, so it's the same letter?
Yeah, but everybody's...
Signed by four different, so I have one from Gloria Grossnickel at 24 Ridge Road. I, and my apologies ahead of time if I pronounce names wrong. I hate doing that, but I do my best. There's a letter from David Keener. There's a letter from Frank Marcello, sorry, David Keener is at 22 Ridge Road, Frank Marcello at 19 Ridge Road, and Robert Pisano and Alex Pisano at 29 Ridge Road. So the letter says, "I am a neighbor of Mr. Jonathan Nash, who resides at 27 Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, New York. Mr. Nash has met with me and explained his plan to build a detached garage next to his current home. It is my understanding that he is requesting the required variance approval from the Town of East Fishkill Zoning Board in order to obtain the necessary building permit. I support the variance requests needed for Mr. Nash to build his garage and do not have any objections to the proposed construction project." So is there anyone else here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jonathan Nash, 27 Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot rear line and a 946-square-foot size variance for a proposed 34-foot by 30-foot detached garage? Yes, come on. Come on up to the microphone, if you don't mind, and there should be a clipboard there for you to sign in when you get your chance, just to get your name right in the minutes.
My name is Ethan Colt. I got the letter that Jonathan Nash is building this, proposing this garage. I also am with my neighbor, Rocco Ruttacio. He's, what number are you? You're 11 Ridge Road.
And what number are you?
I'm, I'm 9 Ridge Road.
Okay.
So in my letter, it's a little different. It says that Mr. Nash is proposing a 2,040-square-foot structure.
That's what we're, that's what we said. That was part of what I said.
I thought, oh, I thought...
It's a 334-foot by 30-foot for a total of 2,040 square feet.
Okay, I thought you said 200 square feet earlier, and I...
No, 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 2,040, sorry.
2,040.
If I said it differently, my apologies, but I did read that as part of the original.
Okay, so my, my concern was that, like, I would look out in the back of my house, and there would be a 2,000-foot structure behind me, and obviously, you know, I wasn't too thrilled to hear that. My wife, our backyard is her sanctuary, and, you know, you got the trees, and you can see the valley, and to see a, a, a structure the size of a house behind us was obviously alarming. And my neighbor, Rocco, and I were talking, and, you know, Rocco felt the same way I did, that having that large structure behind us would not be, wouldn't be liked, to say the least.
Okay.
So I was against it, and I feel bad saying that, but...
No, it's, it's, so the question is...
Yeah.
How far away is your house? What, really, we want to understand, what would you be seeing?
Well...
Because the way, the configuration of the lot...
Yes.
You're saying you're behind, so if he's, if here, this is, what road am I on, sorry?
Ridge Road. Yeah, Ridge Road, right?
Okay, so that's Ridge Road here, his driveway. He's proposing it back here. His lot goes all the way back here.
Uh-huh.
So we're on this neighborhood.
Can I impose it?
You come on up, yep.
All right.
If you can help us understand where you are on the street.
Sure. Let's see, look here, I'm sorry.
Oh, I forget, there's a table there. I don't, I can't see in front of that.
Yeah. All right, so let me get my bearings. So Ridge Road, forgive me, Ridge Road is where?
Ridge Road is your left thumb.
My left thumb. Okay, so this is Ridge Road.
Correct.
Okay, so I would be here, and my, I have an acre of, of an acre here.
Okay, so are you likely to see this?
If the shed would be, where is the shed being proposed?
It's, it's a garage.
I'm sorry, the garage, yeah. Is that being proposed?
You see the box at the top of the driveway?
Right next to the house.
Your head up.
Well, it's not right next to the house.
It's right over here.
Yeah, thank you.
Right here.
Right.
Yeah.
So you see the size of his, his existing house?
Right.
All right, that's the footprint of his existing house?
Okay.
And then the garage that he's proposing.
Can I show this to Rocco?
Yeah, of course.
So here's the house. This is Ridge Road, you're, you're here. You're, you're, I am here, you are here. So there are both...
Yeah, you've got a copy of that. I don't have a copy.
This one?
Yes, survey.
That's just from last week, last month.
It's not clear whether he is this guy or this guy.
Okay.
It's all the subdivision, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know whether it's this guy or this guy. But still, I mean, this is...
So he says it's over here.
And he has a, this shed is already there, so he can imagine that, all he's doing is moving the sheds and putting the garage there.
Yeah, the shed's been moved already.
I know, but again, that's where the old shed was.
Right.
That's the location approximately.
Could you see the old, the old shed when it was there?
I don't, I don't know this current shed. I don't understand.
Okay.
The shed is currently where the garage is proposed to be.
I thought he moved it already.
No.
Okay, so if you can see, if you can see the shed that's there now, that's where the garage is proposed to be, and then you would see the new garage.
I'll probably see the new one because of the...
Because it's, it's higher, yeah.
Yeah, but it is in a better location than I thought it was going to be.
Okay, if you don't mind, if you can come back to the microphone, just so that people can hear you.
Let me give this back to you. Thank you. Okay, so...
Are we, are we better with it?
I am, I am better with it, but I'm a little insecure, you know? Because it is, it is pretty big.
Understanding that he does not have any garages at all, and he's looking for boat storage, so people, there are things people have that just belong in a garage, your lawnmower, your tractor, whatever, you know?
Sure.
There's stuff, snow shovels, whatever, so there's things that belong in a garage that it's good to have storage for.
Sure.
So the fact that he does not have a garage helps us to recognize, you know, he probably, he could use this space.
Yes.
Could he, could it be reduced? Maybe if you guys have a significant objection that you're going to really see it, and we can't mitigate it with landscaping or something like that, so...
Yeah, I hear you.
And the second floor is going to be used for storage, not as a living space.
Yeah, there's no living space.
Yeah, yeah.
No plumbing in this, no...
So the first, I don't know the height, you know, do you know the height of the first?
The current one, that is the total height.
The current shed's height is about 14 feet, or what?
The shed?
Current shed's height.
Probably 10 feet.
I don't know, just a standard shed.
Probably about 10 feet.
Probably 10, 10 feet.
10 feet, so you're looking at double the size, basically.
I suppose I'll be, I'm okay.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I'm sold.
That's okay, thank you for coming out, and I'm happy we could, you know, make sure you understood what was being proposed. So is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the application from Jonathan Nash, 27 Ridge Road? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Appeal number 4063. Applicant is Jonathan Nash, requesting a one, a 15-foot rear line variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and two, a 946-square-foot size variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Zoning Ordinance for a proposed detached garage with a footprint measuring 34 feet by 30 feet, and is 2,040 square foot in total, the variances. The property is located at 27 Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by Zoning Board Member Aziz Anson, whereas the property originally contained a garage in the house, which was converted to living space, and whereas the applicant has applied to install a three-car garage with a second story for storage, and whereas the footprint of the existing house is 1,824 square foot, and whereas under Section 194-107(c) of the Town Code states in part that a detached garage cannot exceed 750 square foot or 60% of the square footage of the footprint of the principal structure, whichever is greater in size and 1.5 stories or 25 feet in height, and whereas this is a type 2 Action and Seeker, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on May 17th, 2023, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on May 23rd, 2023, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could be achieved by some other means, but the location of the detached garage is the most logical location due to it being placed near the driveway. The variances could be deemed substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Jonathan Nash for one, a 15-foot rear line variance for the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and two, a 946-square-foot size variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Zoning Ordinance for a proposed detached garage with a footprint measuring 34 feet by 30 feet, and is 2,040 square foot in total, and the variances, on the conditions that garage not be used for living spaces, living space, and that includes sleeping quarters. We further resolve that within five business days of adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning ordinance, zoning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moves as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your son-in-law's motion carries. You guys are all set, now you'll just deal with the Building Department, okay?
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, and thank you for coming out.
No worries.
All right, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there is no item three. They're, they're still working on their requests, so we're going to go right to item number four, which is Appeal 4064 Joseph Miller, 17 Clark Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 5-foot rear line and a 32% lot coverage variance for a proposed 10-foot by 31-foot in-ground pool pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the Zoning Ordinance. Hi, good evening. So you are in?
17 Clark Place.
Right, this is Hopewell?
Yes.
What?
Yeah, Hopewell Glen.
Okay. And so for board members' information, it's come to our attention that the lot coverage, because these are smaller lots, all right, is, is an issue, and so we have to just recognize for any requests, or likely most requests that are going to come in for Hopewell Glen, because the lots are smaller and the houses are not necessarily smaller, that we have to look at lot coverage. So Mr. Miller is going to say, "None of my neighbors have had to deal with this before," and he's absolutely right. We haven't, nobody thought about this issue because the lots are smaller, and some of the elaborate landscaping and hardscaping that's going into these homes is absolutely beautiful, because you can see it from the rail trail, but we're recognizing that the coverage of the lot is exceeding, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, like, the 12% or 9%, what, 12% I think is what's allowed, and it's, so...
I, I think the house cover is...
Exactly, that's what I'm getting at, is the house itself, in most of these instant circumstances, is going to be the issue that's putting it already over. So anyway, so you're proposing a 10-foot by 31-foot in-ground pool, so it's really a very thin pool, you know, not wide pool at all, it's probably more of like, for laps and stuff like that.
And that's with the variance, so it's...
Right, yeah, so you try, already tried to minimize your variance by having it...
With the 25-foot setback on each side, you know?
Have you spoken with your neighbors already?
Yes.
Okay.
One has a pool already, the houses behind me, there's like, a 30-foot brush, I can't even see the houses.
Okay.
They have a swimming pool also.
Okay. And so you, this is Hopewell Glen, so there's an HOA?
Yes.
You've dealt with the HOA already, so they're good with this?
Yes.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
I don't see, oh, yeah. I don't see anything from the HOA. Oh, you have it, okay. As long as we have a, we have a letter.
Oh, it's here.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the letter that went out to them.
Anyway, as long as we have it on the letter. I'm good, I'm good.
All right, so, okay for...
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will see you next month for the public hearing. Now the notice will go out to your neighbors, and then we'll take, make sure there's no concerns. If you, again, like the last one did, if you get letters from them, that would be helpful, then they don't actually have to come if they don't want to, okay?
All right, thank you.
Jackie will give you your instructions, because you do have to put a sign up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Appeal number five, 4065 Wendy and Howard Travis, 309 Hillside Lake Road, Wapengers Falls, requesting a 930-square-foot size variance for a proposed 30-foot by 56-foot or 1,680 square-foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the, of the Zoning Ordinance. Hold on one second. If the first application was 30 by 34, and it was 2,040 square feet, how is 30 by 56 only 1,680?
It's two stories.
Okay, got it.
Well, no, but still, it's 30 by 56 is...
1,680.
1,680.
What's 30 by 34?
30 by 30, it was 1,020.
1,020, but it's two floors.
10, 20 plus...
It's two floors, so it's double.
It's double.
Had a second floor on the, the first one.
It's not two stories.
No, no, not yours. Oh, we were, we're doing the math from the first one.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
All right, so, first time we're seeing this?
Yes.
The issue on this one is the footprint of the existing house is 869 feet.
Yes.
You have a very small house.
No.
No, it's, it's, so obviously you don't have a garage in your house.
No.
So a detached garage is probably a necessary function, because there are things, as I said before, like lawn mowers, et cetera, that you need storage for.
Part of it ain't, part of it isn't the garage, it's just, it's like a lean-to coming off the back to put all my...
That's what you're proposing?
That's what I have, that's what, the back, the back part of it's not hooked, it's hooked to the garage, but it ain't a part of the garage, it's put machinery in, and, tractor rototillers, loaders, my tractor...
Right.
Five-tonne wood pellets, a trailer, all kinds of stuff, I got three lawnmowers.
Just see on the third page of the elevations of the...
Okay, but the 56 feet is what's, what's, why are we proposing something so long? Do you have an RV or a boat or something that you're proposing to put in there?
The whole thing, I was going to put a garage part, a workbench, and toolboxes, and air compressors, and, and in winter time, I put my tractor in there so I can have it all warmed up for the, just plow snow with it, and that's what I got, and, yeah, stuff like...
As we ask anybody with a detached garage, especially one that's very large, there's no, you're not operating a business out of here, or anything like that.
Just take care of my property. I couldn't do a business anymore, anyway. I always stand up.
Okay, so it's a garage, and part of the, the length of this is the fact that there's the lean-to on it. That's what the issue is.
I did it that way, so it would be cheaper instead of making it separate.
Yeah, it's not enclosed, and it's, you're just putting a cover on something.
Yeah.
Depending upon your sunlight, you might even be able to put solar panels on here. All right, questions from, or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Good, I have no questions.
Guys, everybody's good? Okay.
No questions. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will see you guys next month. Again, if you can talk to your neighbors, make sure they have no concerns, but Jackie will give you your information about your sign. Your lot, do we have a survey?
Yes.
Yes, we do, hold on. Does your lot of Hopewell Glen, I'm sorry, lot of Hillside Lake goes on to, has double front yards, or not double front yards, they're not front yards anymore, right?
But we're not part of Hillside Lake.
Yeah, you're actually on Hillside Lake.
We're actually on Hillside Lake, yeah.
Right, okay. Oh, you guys, there's, okay, now I know where you are, because you're on, as I'm heading[1711.33] Oh, you guys, there's, okay, now I know where you are, because you're on, as I'm heading out to Arthur'sburg Road, you're going to be on the right there. There's a couple really large lots out there.
While you're walking, right?
Big pond.
Yes, I'm the person that's walking.
Now I'm the big pond.
All the time.
You can't miss the big pond in the front.
In the big pond, right, yeah, okay. Yes, that's me. All right, we will see you guys next month. Jackie will give you your information for your sign.
Thank you.
All right, take care. You can wave to me next time.
I know, I almost stopped, I said, "Good job, keep going."
All right. Item number six, Appeal 4066, Michael Di Battista, 10 East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 35 foot rear line variance for a proposed 20 foot by 20 foot or 400 square foot pool pavilion pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have to ask, I'm drawing a total blank. Where is East Meadow Court?
It's across from Fishville Farms.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. That's, all right, so take us through what you're requesting.
So currently I have a pool under construction.
Right.
The setbacks in my zoning are one, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what I was told, are one zoning. I have for the pool itself, 25 foot setback. For that of an accessory structure, it's 50 foot.
From a back, from a rear line.
So unfortunately, the pool pavilion creates a conflict for its location. And therefore I submitted an application for a variance for that location of that structure.
You've also got a jungle gym.
That's being removed.
That's what?
That's being removed.
Okay.
I think it says it on there. I'm not sure.
Oh, place said to be removed, yes, thank you. I'd have to actually open it up one way, see then. All right. Yeah, this pavilion is what's, because its corner here is only 15.8 feet away from the property line, that's the issue. This is considered as a rear line, that's 30 feet on this side is fine, because it's only a side yard, so that's, that's more than what's required. Even if you, what's the size of the actual pavilion?
20 by 20.
20 foot by 20 foot?
Yes.
It's not even, even if you reduce it, you're still going to need a variance.
Correct.
Okay, so what are the neighbors on each side? Have you spoken with them about it?
I have not spoken to them.
Where are their, where are their houses?
They're pretty far. The, if you're facing my house, the closest structure is to the left and to the right and the homes behind the property are pretty setback.
Okay.
Quite a bit away. And there's also a significant amount of trees and brush between lots.
Okay. So you're, you don't even think that your neighbors would see it?
When, when the foliage is in, in play, no, but during winter, it's very possible and likely.
Yeah, but it's a pavilion for the pool, you're going to be using it in the summer, so.
Correct, yeah.
Like the likelihood is, they're.
Right.
Not, for the time that you'd be using it, they're not going to see it. Comments or questions from board members?
So we're talking just like a gazebo?
Correct.
And what's the base going to be? Is it cement? Concrete?
Yes, concrete.
Four sides and a, both sides, four poles and a roof.
Correct.
Everybody okay?
Yeah, I'm good, okay.
So advertise?
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will see you next month.
All right, thank you very much.
Jackie will give you information about your sign.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, this is the name I'm concerned about pronouncing, sorry. Do you want me to try?
Sure.
I like it when people try.
All right. Item number seven, Appeal 4067, Denise Hayes, I like that one. And James Hajkowski?
Hajkowski, very close.
All right, not bad. The J is silent.
Yes.
All right, that helps.
I am also Denise Hajkowski, but I'm, everything is titled in my formality.
Got it. Two folks, at 32 Moonlight Drive, Stormville, are requesting an eight foot sideline variance for an existing eight foot by 10 foot or 80 square foot shed and a 19 foot sideline variance for a proposed 668 foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprint of the existing house is 1,508 square feet.
Is there a sale on garages somewhere?
No, it's spring. And spring makes everybody, because they, they don't, you submitted your application a while ago, so, you know, it makes people, makes people think it's time to do things. All right, so do you have an existing garage in your house?
There's two car garage in the house. The doors are very tiny and first off, I drive a pickup truck, which would never fit in the garage.
Okay.
And she has a Chevy Blazer, which would barely fit in the garage.
I'd have to get out, fold my mirrors in to barely pull in.
Wow.
It's very, very.
It's so, it's so ridiculous how they built it, it's like.
And our neighbor.
How old is your house?
94, 95.
Oh, okay.
It's weirdly weird, because all the other houses in the neighborhood, they put one big door in. Ours has poles down the middle, so even with, if you've got a car in, you can hardly open the door.
I mean, my garage has very low clearance, so I get what you mean about the.
We're low.
The height of a vehicle. We had a Ford Excursion at one point, could never park that in the garage, so, yeah, that's.
You got the big truck.
Yeah. The proposed 660, so what are the dimensions of the garage? Jackie, you have nine, 668 square feet, but no dimensions.
It should be in my bag, I guess.
I think she.
Where is it? Yeah.
So I have, I have.
This is, this is Miller. That helps why I'm not finding it.
I can't see what it is. It's like 34 by.
Proposed garage.
So this is the, I have to copy it.
But even with my reading glasses, I need a magnifier to read this.
The number's not what you're reading, it's all sound reading.
24 by 38.
Is it wrapping around something?
It's surrounded.
That's why, so one, that's why one side is a little bit, like it's like cut into it.
We also had to make it shorter, a little smaller. We had to shrink the dimensions.
In the bad part of it?
Yeah, so that it would be the right square feet in relation to the house.
So it's less, right, it's less square, it's under the square footage requirements compared to.
You still need a variance, so do you need a bigger garage? I mean, you're here anyway.
Wait, what's your question?
Well, she's saying you need a variance, so do you want?
You're here anyway for a variance, so if this is, if you wanted something a little bit bigger, is that really what you're looking for?
It became an issue with the pool.